The board, we began the meeting at six o'clock and then the board went into executive session to discuss matters regarding contract negotiations. And so we've already done the pledge and we've already done roll call. And so now we're going to move into approval of the agenda. We actually do have a couple of changes for the agenda. So one of them, so one of them is actually small, it's consent agenda financial number eight, which is the approval of the cooperative transportation agreement between the Howden Central School District and the Garrison Union Free School District. Under the recommended action, it's actually the board is going to authorize the superintendent to sign the contract. It's not the board president. I looked at that contract, it's signed by Carl, not by me.
Okay, so I believe I made that change.
You did already? Okay. Oh, okay, I didn't.
It does say interim superintendent.
It does, okay. When I was looking at it, whenever I looked at it, it didn't say.
Yes, I made that change.
Then under new business, we are going to actually postpone number seven, discussion of use of excess fund balance until the next meeting. And number eight, the authorization for the use of the excess fund balance. And number nine, the discussion of the capital referendum vote date, just a week. So I think in all three cases, Catherine, feel free to interrupt me. I know for that date, it's just, we're just gathering a little bit more information before we make a final decision and act upon it. And that's the same for the excess fund balance. Is that correct?
Correct. Primarily due to the use of the capital repair reserve for the field. We're just working with legal counsel and
Sure, everything's.
To be sure that.
Okay, that's, all right. So pending those changes, may we please have the recommendation action?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the agenda as discussed.
You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So the next meeting of the Howden Board of Education is scheduled for next Tuesday, September 3rd at 7:00 PM here in the middle school, high school, library. And yeah, that's pretty much it. Oh, and I just want to say, I know the summer is such a busy time for so many people at the district, definitely all of the the maintenance staff and everybody taking care of the grounds and the buildings and getting the buses ready. And I know people have just been working full steam ahead and that's always so appreciated. I had the very fortunate experience of getting to meet very briefly with the teachers that are joining us this year. And it was really, I really appreciated having the opportunity to welcome them and wish them the best on their careers here and how they, and was really very appreciative that even though it was a handful of teacher, but we really had pretty much the full, I mean, the administrative team was there in full force. We had all the principals. We had Mr. Elder, we had Dr. Kation and Mr. Albano was there. And I just thought that was really, that was a really, it sounded like it was going to be a great couple of days to get those new teachers up and running. And then I know later this week that the rest of the faculty will be back. And so we're about to really get going. So thanks to everybody for the work they've been doing and that they're about to start doing in the past. So the next thing we're going to do is I'm going to open a public hearing for the, for our school district's safety and emergency management plan for the 24, 25 school year. This is Dr. Ben, something that Dr. Benanti distributed to the community, to the school community at the, really, I think the very end of the last school year or the beginning of the summer. And so folks have had time to reflect on it. So I'm opening the public hearing for that. And it's an opportunity for the public and/or board members to ask questions about the district wide safety. Hearing is open. Do you have any questions?
Carl, you had mentioned that because of a late breaking state law that we will be revisiting this in about, at the next meeting or sometime thereafter.
That's, that's correct, Sean. So just to elaborate, there, there is a requirement to post it, make it publicly available for 30 days for review. Give the opportunity for people to, to provide feedback. So tonight, we're not receiving any feedback. I think the plan is something that is well developed. We, we work with our admin team as well as a consulting firm that has a lot of expertise in this. However, in July, New York State added a requirement that districts must notify parents within seven days prior to either fire drills or lockdown drills. So we will, the, the plan that has been posted will be altered slightly. We have to make that addition. And then we have the obligation to post it again for 30 days and reapprove it. However, we're going through this tonight because we would like a plan in place for the opening of school Tuesday. Thank you.
Thanks to everybody. This is such important work. Thanks to everybody who, who, who works on it and is responsible for making sure that those plans are ready to go. We all really appreciate. So given that I don't hear any questions or comments, I'm going to close the public hearing on the Howden Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for the 24, 25 school year. Mr. Albano, do you have any comments you'd like to share?
I do.
Good.
Very similar to what you shared. I'll provide a bit more detail.
I'm sure you will. And I appreciate that.
And not too much, but, but I think it's important to recognize that the summer is a very busy time for schools. Not everyone realizes that. We had this past Wednesday, our admin retreat.
That's right.
We went over to the Putnam History Museum with the admin team. They're busy in their buildings. I, I always am reluctant to pull them away, but we did have some important topics to cover. We have a new revised APPR plan that is on the agenda this evening. We also met with our school attorney. He covered some very relevant topics in education that the admin team welcomed and had some great questions around. And we also spent some time on goal setting. So we continue to meet throughout the year. We do quarterly retreats as well as weekly meetings, but that's just one example of summer work. Also, the admin team working on filling vacancies, refining schedules, planning new programs. There, there are so much that happens. And the new teacher meeting was, was excellent. But the kickoff was, was what you saw. Then teachers came in. Our technology teacher came in and did a lot of trainings with our teachers. Josh Elder worked on curriculum training for them and they embraced it. They also got a tour of our beautiful community. We went up Main Street and then a bus tour. So they really are familiar with the community. So it was a fantastic two days. Thanks for everyone who participated there. Also, we're very excited this year. We have a newly aligned 6 through 12 schedule. All of our principals collaborated, but Julia Sniffin really took the lead with that scheduling initiative. And we think it's going to help us be more efficient with the operation of the schools. Leah Horn did a lot of work with technology. We have a new communication tool. It's entitled K-12 Swift. Parents will see very little change, but there's more efficiency on the backend for, for the admin team and the teachers. So we're looking forward to that. Also, there's a class link tool that we're using that will make sign in for teachers and students much more efficient. And in a classroom, every minute is precious of instructional time. So this is going to really help teachers and they're being trained on it this week, actually. Also, the clerical staff, just tireless work registering students, making sure all the logistics are in place. Also, our transportation and facilities department really needs to get a shout out. The grounds look fantastic. The buildings look fantastic. The Maple Merritt Building went through an asbestos abatement project. There are new floors, there's new lighting, new paint. Still has its challenges just with the configuration of the space, but at least it's brighter and more conducive to teaching. And just today, they moved all classroom furniture. So that, that, that space is ready for instruction. Tom Cunningham also needs to be recognized. He planned and oversaw the, the field replacement. And it looks fantastic and really exciting for the sporting events this year. Also, he reached out, something new this year. He reached out to the Phillips Town Ambulance Corps to set up an ambulance at all five of our home football games. We do have an athletic trainer there, but we're going to add an ambulance this year. And I thank them because they're providing it at a very nominal cost to, to the district. Welcome back to all the faculty. Many of them have been in the building, setting up their classrooms. And I'm sure that'll continue throughout this week. And of course, on Tuesday, September 3rd, we're excited about seeing our students and our families. And we're really hoping it'll be a smooth opening. And I think the hard work will pay off and I anticipate it will.
Great, thank you. All right. So now we are at the first opportunity for communication from the public. And so the Howden Board of Education desires and values input from the entire school community. This first public comment session is reserved for comments on any special presentations or active agenda items. For those who wish to address the board, we'd ask you to sign in and state your names for the record. We'd ask you to keep your remarks to three minutes or less. Disparaging remarks and discussion of district personnel are strongly discouraged. And although the board would not engage in any dialogue, we want people to know that we're listening. And we'd ask you to leave your contact information with our district clerk for prompt follow-up, either from Mr. Albano or myself. Next on our agenda are our information reports that we always receive at our business meetings, right? So these are the, the, the financial documents that we'll be reviewing and approving at our next business meeting, which is in a week. So usually there's a month, this time there's a week. And now we go into consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And consent agenda financial, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. I'm trying to think, Dr. Mr. Albano, I don't think there's anything that we wanted to comment on. This is all pretty straightforward, correct?
It's pretty routine.
Yes. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And consent agenda personnel, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. I think we did want to say something just very brief about this.
Sure, very brief. There is a side letter, letter of agreement with the teachers' union. Inadvertently, we had our middle school drama director stipend slightly higher than the high school. This makes them equal in compensation, which we thought was fair. That was just an oversight. We do have a number of appointments, some aides, paraprofessionals. Thanks to the staff for working hard to fill these positions. We are fully staffed now with this last consent agenda. And there's some coaching. We thank all the teachers and, and people who stepped forward to coach and do all the extras that give us a full high school and middle school program.
Our new girls varsity basketball coach is here.
Oh, fantastic.
Scott.
Oh, ah, Scott, Scott Tempiano? Tim Panav, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
I already heard about you at Tuesday.
That's what I said. I heard about him before he was even on the agenda.
Yeah. This is great. I think it'll be pretty, relatively brief meeting, but anyway, if you have a minute, if you feel like staying so that we can welcome you personally, that would be great. I'll also understand if you want to leave, but this is, it's very exciting.
I heard about X as an O.
That's right.
All right. And I think that's what we wanted to cover. All right. So all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Yep. So now we're moving on into new business. Yes, C, CPSC recommendations?
Okay. Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the recommendations of the Committees on Special Education and Preschool Special Education as presented.
May I have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And any opposed? And next, now we had our hearing for the school district's safety and emergency management plan at the beginning of the meeting, but now is when we're going to be approving that plan.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the super, of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Howden Central School District Safety and Emergency Management Plan for 2024, 2025.
We have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And now we'll move to the approval of the, the building level school emergency response plans, the recommended, recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the Howden Central School District Building Level School Emergency Response Plans for 2024, 2025.
You have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now the approval of the K-12 guidance plan for 24, 25?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves the K-12 guidance plan for the 2024, 2025 school year.
You have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
I don't think there's anything that we want to say about this, I guess, other than thank people very much for their work on it.
A lot, a lot of work goes into it. It's a comprehensive plan and it's available for, for the public on the website.
Great, yes, so people know about that. That's a really important thing for people to have access to. Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now the authorization of the execution of section 3012D Annual Professional Performance Review District Certification Form.
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby authorizes the board president, along with the interim superintendent of schools, to execute the district certification form for the district's submission to the State Education Department of its amended education law, 3012D APPR Plan Document for Classroom Teachers and Building Principals evaluated thereunder as presented to the board at this meeting.
You have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Albano, this is part of an effort, I think, that's happening around the country, but definitely in New York, just to help make the APPR, our, our process for, you know, conducting teacher evaluations be, work better for people. Is that a fair statement?
Correct. And additionally, in, in the past, evaluation plans were decided by local districts. However, over the past 15 years or so, the, the state requires, there are certain guidelines, there's education law that districts have to work within certain parameters. The law changed in 2019. However, your plan has to be negotiated with your teachers' union and your administrators' union. Josh Elder really took the lead with this during this past negotiation session and has updated the plan to be in compliance with state and law. Now, of course, we have a plan in place this evening. There is a very recent update to the law, so we may come back to after the next negotiations takes place. But right now, we're in compliance. It changed the growth measure. We're, we're using a, a district wide measure for that piece of the plan. And then we had to just realign our observation rubric to be aligned with the Charlotte Dan and Simbalo. So this is a great plan. Admin was trained. Teachers will be trained this Thursday at their, their, their conference day. And then it'll be rolled out to school.
So thanks to everybody for their work on that. If people have any other questions or things they want to chat about it?
No, I think it was a success by the teachers' union and the, and the state legislatures to realize local control was a better overall approach. Yeah.
Absolutely. All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. The adoption of the State of New York Deferred Compensation Plan. Maybe we have the recommended action, please?
Whereas the Howden Central School District wishes to adopt the Deferred Compensation Plan for employees of the State of New York and other participating public jurisdictions for voluntary participation of all eligible employees. And whereas the Howden Central School District is a local public employer eligible to adopt the plan pursuant to section five of the state finance law. And whereas the Howden Central School District has reviewed the plan established in accordance with section 457 of the Internal Revenue Code and section five of the state finance law and finance law of the State of New York. And whereas the purpose of the plan is to encourage employees to make and continue careers with the Howden Central School District by providing eligible employees with a convenient and taxed favored method of saving on a regular and long-term basis and thereby provide for their retirement. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Howden Central School District hereby adopts the plan for the voluntary participation of all eligible employees. And be it further resolved that the appropriate officials of the Howden Central School District are hereby authorized to take such actions and enter such agreements as are required or necessary for the adoption, implementation and maintenance of the plan. And be it further resolved that the Administrative Services Agency is hereby authorized to file copies of these resolutions and other required documents with the President of the State of New York Civil Service Commission.
You have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So my understanding, that's a lot of words, of my understanding is really what this is. It's providing another alternative for staff to save for their retirement. And it's, and that's, and that's a good thing.
Lot of legal language. We offer 403B to all employees. This is one other option. It's very similar, but it's a 457 plan. It's tax deferred savings. It's no extra cost to the district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So next, where the authorization to renew the committee charges for 2024, 25? The recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby reauthorizes the committee charges as presented for 2024, 2025.
You have a motion, please?
So moved. Second.
So I think this is pretty clear to everybody. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And next, we have the appointment of our board member representatives to the Howden Audit Committee. Maybe we have the recommended action, please?
Be it resolved that upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education hereby approves Ezra Clemmison and Sean McNell to serve on the Howden Audit Committee for 2024, 2025.
You have a motion, please? So moved.
Second, I guess.
And so, great, so this, so we're wrapping up the audit right now. I know, actually, it's one of the things I should have said in my opening remarks. I always know it's so much work, but that, that's, you know, coming to an end. It's such an important part of what we do every year in all districts in New York State are the, our financial audits. And then the audit committee meets with the auditor to both get the report and then it will, will come, and then they'll come to us. So, um, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we have two really recommended actions that are related to our, our capital referendum. And my understanding, Megan, is that you need to read them in their entirety. So everybody buckle up.
We kind of want to.
Settle in.
Practicing, I know.
Whereas, the Board of Education of the Howden Central School District has determined the need to provide repairs and improvements for the various buildings and facilities owned and managed by the district, described in the attached exhibit and environmental assessment forms. And whereas, under Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations at 6 NYCRR, Part 617, collectively the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the district is required to undertake a review of the potential environmental impacts, if any, associated with the proposed action before approving it, including classifying the action and declaring lead agency. And whereas the district, under the applicable standards of SECR, has classified the project as a type one action. And whereas, under SECR, the district prepared full environmental assessment form. And whereas, under SECR, district circulated the EAF on July 10, 2024 to interested and involved agencies with intent for the district to be the lead agency. And whereas, interested in and involved agencies have had 30 days or more to respond and no agencies have declared intent or interest for lead agency. And whereas, the interim superintendent of school recommends that the Board of Education declare itself as lead agency for the proposed action. Now therefore, be it resolved, upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent, the Board of Education of the Howden Central School District declares itself as the lead agency, meeting the standards of SECR. And be it further resolved, the Board authorizes the interim superintendent to sign the EAF and other related documents on behalf of the district and to authorize any SECR-related actions and agreements on behalf of the district. And be it further resolved that the district directs its consultants, CS Arch Engineering, Architects and Construction Management and Passero Associates to complete the appropriate forms and documents as required under SECR in relation to the proposed action for future and further consideration and action by the district. Okay, and it's a roll call. President Peggy Clemens.
Yes.
Trustee Ezra Clemmison.
Yes.
Trustee Sean McNell.
Yes.
Trustee Michelle Cover.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, so now we have a second action that we need to undertake also. One considerable breadth or length, so maybe we have the recommended action, please?
Whereas, the Board of Education of the Howden Central School District has determined the need to provide repairs and improvements for the various buildings and facilities owned and managed by the district. And whereas, under Article 8 of the New York State Environmental Conservation Law and its implementing regulations at 6 NYCRR, Part 617, collectively the State Environmental Quality Review Act, the district prepared environmental assessment form circulated for lead agency intent and declared lead agency on August 27th, 2024. And whereas, the project includes the following scope and details. Project one, proposed improvements include a building addition for a student center slash STEAM Innovation Lab slash classroom wing at the high school and a small addition for a STEAM Innovation Lab at the main building for a gain of 18,946 square feet. Project two, proposed improvements include a building addition for an auditorium and music classroom at the high school and a fitness and wellness center at the main building for a gain of 15,283 square feet. Project three, proposed improvements include a building addition for a gymnasium and macaroons at the high school and expansion of the art gallery at the main building for a gain of 13,294 square feet. See SECR classification summary and table two for additional project scope and flow. I'm sorry, project scope. And whereas, the project proposes no traffic increases or significant change to traffic count, flow or circulation at any of the project buildings and facilities. And whereas, the project as proposed will not cause a visual or noise impact at any of the project buildings and facilities. And whereas, the project as proposed will not significantly impact energy usage at any of the project buildings and facilities. And whereas, the New York State Environmental Resource Mapper identifies potential natural communities of brackish subtitle aquatic bed, chestnut oak forest, pitch pine oak heath rocky summit, oak tulip tree forest in the vicinity of the project site. And whereas, the New York State Environmental Resource Mapper identifies potential endangered or threatened species of northern long-eared bat, timber rattlesnake, bald eagle, western beak grain, fence lizard, Atlantic sturgeon, short-nosed sturgeon in the vicinity of the project. short-nosed sturgeon in the vicinity of the project site. And whereas, the project site has been identified as an historic site or eligible for listing and/or historic areas adjacent to the project sites. And whereas, the board has further reviewed the various components and aspects of the project, including the potential environmental impacts resulting therefrom. Now therefore, be it resolved, upon the recommendation of the interim superintendent of schools, the Board of Education has determined that the project is a Type 1 action under SECR. And the board has compared the proposed action with the criteria for determining significance in 6 NYCRR 617.7C of the SECR regulations and determined that the proposed action will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment. And be it further resolved that the project will have no impact on listed potential endangered or threatened species. As part of the project design/review and permitting with the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, confirmation of no jurisdiction will be sought. And be it further resolved, the project will have no impact on potential wetlands or water bodies as part of the project design/review and permitting with the New York State DEC, confirmation of no jurisdiction will be sought. And be it further resolved, the project will have no impact on listed potential environmental communities as part of the project design/review and permitting with the New York State DEC, confirmation of no jurisdiction will be sought. Be it further resolved, the project design will be reviewed with the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation and Historic Preservation prior to New York State Education Department approval. And be it further resolved that the board hereby adopts and issues the negative declaration of significance annexed heretofore and made part of, hereof, as Attachment A. And be it further resolved that this resolution shall be deemed a notice of determination of non-significance issued pursuant to 6 NYCRR Part 617 of the SECR regulation.
That's.
President Peggy Clements.
Oh wait, did we, I have to, I still have to take a motion for this, and then we'll do the vote. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
I actually have a question. Yeah. And I should have noticed it before. But I.
We were required to include, we were legally required to include all the components, but I do think it's important to note.
Yeah.
We are not proceeding with all of those components at this time.
Yeah. Yeah. So that's actually, that's exactly what I wanted to point out. That, that you said we were advised to seek, so CSR.
You were required to include it all.
To do it all at once, even though the board has been very, very clear that we're really taking this one step at a time. And our focus for a while is the, 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 an initial phase of the work that we think is most critical. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. President Peggy Clements.
Yes.
Trustee Ezra Clemmson.
Yes.
Trustee Sean McNell.
Yes.
Trustee Michelle Cooper.
Yes. Okay. Um. A second opportunity for communication from the public. Anybody have anything? Would you be about anything? Yes. Yeah. This would be a great time for you to stand up and introduce yourself. Thank you.
I mean, I'll happily stick around and talk towards. Speak with anyone. But I just wanted to introduce myself, but it's Scott Timpano. I was just hired to be the girls varsity basketball coach. I'm a fifth grade teacher in Beacon, and I've been there for, geez, almost 15 years now. I'm extremely excited to get started pushing the girls. I know that there is an extreme enriched tradition of excellence in athletics here in Howden with boys and with the girls' basketball programs. And I'm excited to get back in the gym with all the girls that want to be a part of the program and start working and see what we can put together. And hopefully, with some time and some hard work, we will give the community and everyone that lives in the greater Cool Spring area a product that they can be proud of, both in the classroom and on court. So thank you all for your.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any board reflections?
Oh, well, I guess in addition to all those individuals who were thanked for their work over the summer, just also gratitude to all of the staff members who continue to support students through extended learning through the summer.
Oh, absolutely.
Which there are, there are many, and, you know, both in the classroom, but, you know, providing consistency and support and care throughout the year. And I guess I will also say that, you know, as my son has had a one-to-one aide, and you may or may not be aware of this, but there are a lot of summer programs that kids go to that it's very difficult for kids with social development issues, one kind or another, to participate in. But, you know, one of the beauties of our small community is that you develop relationships with these individuals who work for the school, who are the one-on-one aides who then become the people to know your students best, your kids best in the community. So, you know, we, the school didn't pay for it. We were in a position to employ his one-to-one aide to provide support for him at a local program that otherwise would not have been able to compensate him, and it was very successful. So my gratitude for that relationship.
That's great to hear. And my memory is that we did some of the extended learning here on campus this time for for the, on campus this year for the first time. So thank you so much for noting that. That's great. Anything else anybody wants to? All right. Mr. Albon, any final thoughts?
No, just again, thank you. I also personally want to thank Megan, the admin team, several of them are here, and the board for just welcoming me and being patient with me and bringing me up to speed so quickly. You have a great team here. I know the board knows that, but, but I think it needs to be said publicly. You have a fantastic team, and I am very confident with this opening. I always get a little bit of anxiety before school opens, and it's been 34 years. That's just what I go through, but I feel very comfortable, and it's really because of the people around me. They do great work.
Well, and we should have thanked you. I know you really hit the ground running this summer. There's a lot to do. It's a big year. I was going to do my beginning of year speech next time, but there was really a lot for you to, to get up to speed on, and, and we really appreciate the communication and, you know, all the work you've been doing. So it's been a good start. So thank you.
Good pleasure.
All right. So I move to adjourn the meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.